Has anyone heard from him?
He, he has confirmed he will not be in attendance.
Okay. All right, then the time is now five thirty-one and as Acting Mayor Pro Tem, I will call tonight's meeting for the Blythewood Town Council to order today. It's Thursday, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. We're at the Manor, which is one hundred Alvina Haygood Circle, Blythewood, South Carolina, two nine zero one six. Ms. Durst, would you mind performing a roll call?
Councilwoman Page?
Here.
Councilwoman Fritt?
Here.
Councilman McHenry?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brock?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've established a forum. All right, item number two, or rather B, notification of posting of the meeting agenda. Ms. Durst and Mr. Steins, was the meeting posted in accordance with state law?
Yes, it was.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, item C, Pledge of Allegiance. Please join Councilwoman Fritt for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. Councilwoman Fritt?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll come to you tonight, thanking you for everyone that is here, Lord God, in advance. I just ask that you allow everyone to make it home safely. The following while we're here, we just ask that you give us wisdom and guidance as we discuss the governance of the town of Blythewood, Lord God. We just ask for a, a healthy discussion, a civil meeting, and, Lord, we thank you in advance for all that you do in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I assume so.
Should be.
Jordan, are we good? No?
Well, it's, so if we have audio, it's on the still screen, they won't go off with that.
But we, we are broadcasting at least verbally?
Yes.
Okay. Then, uh, well, first of all, thank you, Councilwoman Fritt. Secondly, I would remind individual members of council, since there is no video and we have this large audience in front of us, please put on our microphones so that everyone will be able to hear us. With that being said... All right. Members of council in front of you, we have one action item tonight. We have citizen testimony. Do not believe I see any citizens here, but if they choose to show up, they will be granted time to speak on any action item as it's presented. We have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dot zero zero nine and ordinance to amend the ordinance twenty twenty-four dot zero four zero zero four, so as to provide for amendments to the revenue and expenditures appropriations of the general fund, state accommodations tax fund, local accommodations tax fund, and hospitality tax fund in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Mr. Steins?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Brock and members of council. I think what I'll do is just kind of walk through. So we've got a total of about thirteen items here that are throughout the budget for amendment, and we'll just start at the top and go through each section and maybe have discussion for notes as we move through if that sounds...
Yeah, that, that's fine, Mr. Steins. Members of council, I don't have one through six. Am I the only one that's...
I got an extra copy.
Oh, there it goes.
You, you have it?
I do, yeah.
I want one through six.
Yeah, I have it. I can give you an extra copy.
Just ma- make sure it's not printed front and back.
It's...
It's on the back of the, um, agenda.
Oh, my bad. Oh, it's on the back of the agenda. Oh, okay. Apologies. All right, sorry about that.
You're fine. So first item for discussion and amendment is, uh, ten dash forty-one twenty dash one eighty, general fund administration salaries, reduction in salaries in an amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, amending the budget line to three hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine. The amount reduced will be moved to ten ninety-two hundred, nine nine one contingency, or otherwise known as unallocated fund balance. The reduction is a council request based on reevaluating and justifying staffing needs within the town administration. This amount reflects three full-time positions and one part-time position, Assistant Town Administrator, Administrative Assistant Part-Time, Human Resources Specialist, and Annexation and Economic Development Coordinator. I also want to add that for clarity on those numbers, I ran the FY twenty-five salary, uh, numbers, and so with the merit and the salary, it's five hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight sixty-seven. For year-to-date, with our most existing spending report, we have spent one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, uh, twenty-eight dollars and four cents on existing staff. That leaves a remaining balance of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight, uh, dollars and ninety-six cent. The amended positions total we just discussed would be the two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That would be positions to be removed, and the projected remaining salaries for this fiscal year for the existing staff would be one fifty-two, three nineteen. Uh, I caution that that is an approximate, not a one-hundred percent number, but that would leave a remaining balance in the ten forty-one twenty-one eighty of thirty thousand, forty-one dollars and ninety-six cent. One of those reasons is after I sent the packet, I had overlooked, uh, because it was in a separate spreadsheet, there was three intern positions allocated to the same, uh, administration budget, and I believe, correct me if I'm right, Julie, wrong, about fifteen thousand is what we were looking at for all three of those for the fiscal year? Right.
Was that fifteen thousand dollars apiece?
No, sir.
Fifteen thousand dollars?
No, it'd be total.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, so if you looked at those three intern positions, and those are in the, um, spreadsheet worksheet that was provided in the packet, you'll see three interns within there, and if that was removed, that would leave you roughly fifteen thousand in that administration budget. As, as part of this amendment, you also have ten dash forty-one twenty, one eighty-two, and ten dash forty-one twenty-one eighty-three, which is the same, which is the retirement and the health insurance for the same, uh, allocations of positions, and those amounts are to amend in the amount of forty-five thousand, four dollars, amending that budget line item to fifty-nine, six fifty, and then for the health insurance, it would be a reduction in health insurance in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars, amending that bu- budget line item to forty-four thousand, eight twenty-four. So that would be our administrative salaries adjustment, um, item total, if we want to have discussion on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Steins. Members of council, we open this, these three items, ten forty-one twenty, one eighty, ten forty-one twenty-one eighty-two, and ten forty-one twenty-one eighty-three open for discussion, although I think it's fair to say that one feeds into the other two.
Okay.
So if you amend the top line item, amending one eighty, it automatically feeds into one eighty-two and one eighty-three.
That, that would be correct. I just wanted to be clear on all the dollars.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if I may?
Councilwoman Kendrick.
Ms. Julie, thank you for being here. Um, do you have the balance of ninety-two hundred, nine nine one, the contingency fund before we act tonight?
Contingency was two hundred and seventy-four, balance is nine hundred and seventy-one on the regular FY twenty-five.
Added to a balance of, or, or we deal with the contingency fund as a standalone fund?
Right.
Okay.
I just take that number. I have no idea of all the numbers.
Okay. So at the end of the budget year, that money would be swept to the unrestricted account, technically. Okay, thank you. I just want to know where our starting point was.
Do any other members have any other questions regarding these three line items?
I'm not a question as much as maybe some discussion.
Sure, floor's open.
Um, are we going to handle these individually by motion? Which I would recommend because of, because now, I mean, there are several reductions and then there are several increases, so I would ask that we handle these individually by motion. Is that fair?
Sounds fair.
So that in the recording, it's just...
Yeah.
It's, it's, yeah, okay.
Um, and then, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if I may?
Sure.
Um, I handed out to council a spreadsheet that I put together. It's the green, mainly green, has some yellow and red on it. Um, as, as part of these budget amendments, I'm going to recommend that, because part of the issue is we're interchanging, or there's been some interchanging of some positions. What we approved in the budget through the budget process, which Ms. Julie has noted in notes columns in our approved budget, and then there are some that we have, some open positions that we just haven't filled, of which Mr. Steins just spoke of, so I am going to make the recommendation that in these budget amendments, we also ask Ms. Julie to go back in the budget by category, and when I say by category, I'm talking about the categories that we're talking about within the budget that have employee dollars, which would be forty-one twenty, forty-three ten, forty-four ten, seventy-one thirty, forty-one ten, forty-one fifty, and that, I believe that covers them all. I may have missed some.
Seventy-one twenty.
Seventy-one twenty?
Uh-huh.
Who's in seventy-one twenty?
That's the Manor admin, so it's the full-time staff of the Manor.
Seventy-one twenty-one eighty?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, uh, that would be, who is in there currently?
That's Fred, Jana, Kim, and Walt.
In their what's number, Ms. Julie?
Seventy-one twenty, uh, one eighty.
What's seventy-one thirty?
Admin, that's the operations. That's the Manor attendants and the operation of the Manor.
All right, and then for purposes of what Ms. Julie just said, one of my line items would then change, which I could do, but I'm going to recommend that we are position-specific. So when this council passes a budget by position, and we say we're going to hire three interns, each of those interns would carry an account number, um, and that those positions would start obviously with the administrator and, and move clear down through council. I have that typed out, so Brock, as we talk about this, as part of these budget amendments, I, I'm going to ask that we attach these, and for second reading, we see these before second reading. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. My, my question would be to Ms. Julie, is, is that a problem?
I wonder if it will be for the accounting people, because right now, they have the chart of accounts and they zip it into Quick Charge, and I would have to get them also to, as they're inputting in the payroll, they would have to change it. So I could put ten forty-one twenty, one eighty dash...
Zero one.
TA for Town Administrator or something, or, and I could do that, but I, it's getting them to do it, and then what do we do with the past?
We wouldn't do anything with, obviously, we wouldn't do anything with the past.
Okay, well then, just to play devil's advocate, wouldn't it be better to start this on July one?
I think so.
Right, then to change the chart of accounts.
Then to do it mid-year.
Because if it's just that one line item...
We, we can adjust the, the dollar so that it equals what you ultimately want to pay out.
Is it, is it just that one line item that you want broken down into three subsets?
It would be one eighty in each of those subsets. So one eighty would be the only accounts I'm recommending we would drill down in, not part-time, only full-time, because part-time is a collective pot, which is part of the, which is part of how I believe we've gotten here tonight. The collective pot is how we've gotten here tonight.
I think, I think that's ultimately, to echo what Council McKendrick says, if you've got a pot of money and you've allocated it to, in this instance, um, Ms. Julie, under administration, ten four twenty, one eighty, that's just administration staff. Those dollars are allocated to pay salaries for whomever falls under that classification, correct?
Correct, correct.
All right, so therefore, I guess once the budget's passed, the mayor would have the authority to just use that bucket as he saw fit. If there are positions that go unfilled, he could reallocate those funds for another position. Is, is that not correct? Daniel or Mr. Balthazar? In other words, you can be sold a bill of goods and then given something else. I want A, B, and C, but A, B, and C's not working out, so I can fill it in with D, E, and F.
I think I'd go back to, if you're, if you had a position, if you had money for one position and you wanted to change it to another bucket or line, you would have to bring it back to council as amendment.
But if it didn't change it to another bucket, if it fell within the same classification, administration salaries, let's say, for example, let's, let's talk about one that, uh, is on our list, we'll just use the last one, Annexation Economic Development Coordinator. In speaking with very, with you, Mr. Steins, and a couple of other members, I think we, most of us, I can't speak for member, members of council, arrived at the conclusion that that may not be a position that we need, at least at this time. So how much money was allocated out there for that position? I don't know.
I believe it was sixty-five thousand.
Okay, so there's sixty-five thousand dollars in a line item, which was the forty-one twenty-one eighty, administration salaries.
Correct.
It's allocated to an economic development and annexation person. That's what council was told those funds would be used for. However, that can be altered and hire, and you could hire whomever. Is, is, is it fair to say that is what could happen?
I guess so, uh, appropriation-wise, Pete, I mean...
Because the money's been budgeted for administration salaries, but to, to Council McKendrick's point, it's not actually allocated for a specific position. It's just all in a bucket, right? So if you've got a hundred thousand in excess or a hundred and fifty thousand in excess salary, you could effectively hire who you want to hire, as long as there's, as long as there's appropriate funding that's allocated within that bucket. But council has deemed these positions, well, the, the question is, are they necessary at this point? And if they are, then council would leave them be. If they're not, as a legislative function, which is appropriations, we could remove them by deep, by effectively removing the funding source. That's a fair statement? Does anyone disagree with this? I'm kind of looking at you, Pete, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure what, what the question is here for me. I mean, we're talking about budgeting, we're talking about...
Legislatively, do we have...
I may, I answer legal questions, so I'm not...
Well, no, legislatively, does council have the authority to retract appropriations?
Yes.
Okay, then there we go.
The budgeting, budgeting is strictly and solely a legislative function.
Yep, and it can go up and it can come down.
Yes.
Okay. So, so that's kind of...
In, in very simple terms, yes. I mean, it is, the, the legislature has the power of the purse strings.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'm, I'm not opposed to waiting till July. But if we were all on the same page, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight. Exactly what we're talking about has happened.
No, I agree with that.
I mean, that's why we're here.
Yes.
And there's, there's, and I'll back up a little bit and give some context from my personal viewpoint for those people who... Jordan, can they see yet or are they just listening? Okay, thank you. For those people who may be watching at home, um, this special call meeting, I don't think there's a person up here that wouldn't have liked to have avoided this, and the attempt has been made multiple times to have an open dialogue with our mayor, who refuses to dialogue with this council. And I'm using the word refuse because it's the correct word to use. There has been a refusal to dialogue with this council. I personally pleaded with the mayor in our last executive session to communicate with this council. Let us know what your plan is. Let us know where this town is going. We were not appointed, not a person behind this table was appointed. We were elected by the citizens of Blythewood to help govern the town of Blythewood, and we are charged with passing a budget, and we can only pass a budget by the information we collectively discuss and agree to fund, which we did. The budget we are currently operating in, there were two budget workshops, we discussed it, we passed it here, and what is being done with this budget by the mayor under his directive is counterintuitive to what this council agreed to do. That has led us to this point. So when we say we can add drilled-down account numbers in July, there's a long time between now and July. I can't go a month and keep up with what this mayor's doing, who chooses not to communicate, and it's not me. I'm one person he's not communicating with. He's not communicating with a single member of this council. So people who are like, oh, here we go, council's special call meeting, and now they're talking about reducing and increasing? As a councilperson who was elected to serve up here, I have no choice but to cast votes tonight, because every other attempt that has been made up till this evening, and there's been zero communication, even to the point, even to the point, at one o'clock today, our attorney wrote a letter to the Attorney General for an opinion at the request of our mayor. So he didn't even open a dialogue at one o'clock this afternoon with this council when he knew this meeting was happening tonight. He went to our attorney and had an opinion letter written to the Attorney General of the state of South Carolina. I live in Blythewood. I shop in Blythewood. We all do. We were elected to serve and we're not being allowed to do so. So that, that, that's what drove me here tonight. That's why my request is to drill down, and I don't know that I'm satisfied with waiting till July.
Okay. I just have one question. If a line item on the budget is reduced, what prevents an authoritative figure, whether it be the mayor or someone else on staff, from exceeding that line item? And if they exceed it, what are the repercussions if council doesn't amend the budget to cover that excess?
I can tell you what the Constitution says.
That's a good place to start.
The state constitution, Article ten, Section eight, says, "Money shall be drawn from the treasury of a political subdivision only in pursuance of appropriations made by law."
According to the Constitution, one cannot exceed...
The state constitution.
Yes, yes. One cannot exceed the amount appropriated by the legislative body.
I mean, I think that's a fair, fair paraphrasing of it.
Okay.
Money cannot be drawn from the treasury except in accordance with appropriations that are made.
Okay. Councilwoman Kendrick, does that satisfy your concern? And if it doesn't, that's okay, to, if there's a number that we can, and Ms. Emery can help us here, we can back into these numbers, if we know exactly how much to the, I'm assuming to the penny, will be spent on each individual in these line items? And, and we can take those numbers, and if we move for a reduction in, in workforce tonight, which is a part of this amendment, we can tie that back to the number, the final number, the budgeted number, and we should not exceed that at all.
And, go ahead. But Administrator Steins just said that, I mean, I think you did, I might be misspeaking. That can't be an exact number.
Not an accurate number. I think, I think you can give it on the expense side, maybe not necessarily on the revenue side. If you're paying somebody sixty thousand dollars a year and you have ten employees, you know you're going to spend six hundred thousand dollars. You should be able to get to that number on the expense side. Revenues... Salaries, I think, are, are pretty standard. Twenty-four checks a year.
Right, my, my reference was more into what the remainder is for this fiscal year.
Okay, okay.
I, I didn't sit and add every last payroll we had, so I might, I'm just saying I might have missed a payroll. I was just putting a disclaimer that we may want to have for this amendment purpose. Moving forward, we should know the salaries of every individual, merit and colla to, if merit is part of it, to add to that, so yes.
And so, Councilman McHenry, I just want to make sure when you're asking for Julie to basically have the chart of accounts changed, so explain, you've got the one line item, you've got those three part-time positions, you want to, per point, A, B, C, or one, two, three, under that? Give me, if, if they're three part-time positions, why are we drilling those down?
Wouldn't apply to part-time.
Okay, okay.
Only full-time.
Okay.
And, and Mayor Pro Tem, Brock, to your, to your point, and I'm going to, I'll give an example, and, and we can speak to it, and it's not an example, it, it is currently a situation, but I'm, I'm going to use generalities. During our budget process, council agrees, let's say council has agreed to hire... council agrees, let's say council has agreed to hire A, B, and C positions. And, and we're going to pay those positions fifty thousand dollars apiece. So we've budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for salary, and then they're going to have benefits, and they're going to have retirement. Then at the end of the year, they're going to have cost of living, they're going to have merit, et cetera. But we start with three positions making fifty thousand dollars a year. Everybody follow me?
Yes.
All right, position B, we don't hire because it's vacant, we haven't had the correct applicants. Position B is, is there and vacant, and we're actively trying to fill it. And then the mayor comes in and says, we're not hiring B anymore, we're hiring Z. And here's the person, and they're starting. What I'm going to do, and, and Z doesn't do the same thing as B was going to do. It's a totally different, it's a totally different person, totally separate set of responsibilities. But council never knew that position was even being considered, much less being hired and/or appointed by the mayor. What I'm attempting to do is saying A, B, and C by position have an account number tied to them in our general fund. So, and if one is vacant, if you have an administrative assistant that's vacant, yeah, you can hire an administrative assistant, but you can't hire a chef. And I'm telling you, as I'm sitting here tonight, if we deal with pots, we're going to be right back here trying to communicate with leadership in a different way, shape, or form if we do not do this now. That's just, and I'm fine, we, we need to move on, but I'm fine. If you're dealing with buckets, there's no guardrails.
Well, the, the guardrail is the ceiling, which is the amount of money that you've got.
Which is the amount of money in the bucket.
But it doesn't, but you can't necessarily say it goes to any one, it can, it's, it's kind of a, for lack of a better word, kind of a free-for-all.
Yep.
So you're looking to codify, essentially, through the budgeting process, specific positions at, at specific pays.
Absolutely, it's what we agreed to hire during the budget.
I have no, I ultimately have no problem with this. I just question, is it easier to do it on July 1?
No question, it's easier. Miss Julie, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't trust, I don't trust easy.
Is it something that could be put in place, let's say, in ten days?
Well, we would have payroll in ten days, so.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Two weeks?
I gotta do my. Very possible. I gotta talk with the CPAs and everything, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I would just like an attempt to be made here.
Okay. If we can't do it, we can't do it. Okay, we certainly move on. All right, well, before we move on, does anyone have any addition? Does anyone object to the positions that are outlined in Paragraph 1 on the memo from staff? Any objections, any additions?
No.
But understanding, understanding. I don't even know how to word this. Does number, does the wording of number one and how we're getting to the reduction of two hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars? I, I'm good, let's start there.
Just to point a clarity, I did want to mention the three interns are not mentioned in that number one statement. So if we wanted to add that, that would be the fifteen thousand, so, that would leave more or less that thirty thousand forty-one ninety-six minus fifteen, just for.
I thought you said that this amount reflects the, our three full-time positions and one part-time, oh, never mind. One part-time.
Right.
So the two forty-two doesn't include.
Does not include the interns.
Correct.
Correct.
What is the body's thought on interns?
Having them, having those three positions removed, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's the question, yes.
I should also note that there are intern positions left in, Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, one in Public Works and one here at the Manor.
Did we intend to fill in this fiscal year?
The idea, if I recall, in the budget process was an intern program, and it were, they were split among various departments.
And one with the park and one with the Manor.
Yeah, there were six total, was there not?
But, no, it's three, four, yeah, six.
Right.
And do we have any of them?
No.
Not to date.
Has there been any progress on that program?
No, and just to speak to that, an intern program is quite a bit more involved than just the dollars. You know, getting a proper program, you, you want the, in my opinion, you want the kids or the folks who come in to have an experience, and we just haven't had the time to set up the program. So we, I know Fred has been working to try and recruit some, an intern here at the Manor. He's met with a couple, they just haven't taken it. So it, it's just a matter of implementation, but we have not done anything yet.
So just to clarify, there are six intern positions, three at Town Hall, one at the Park, one here at the Manor, and where's the sixth one?
Public Works.
Public Works. And do those total fifteen thousand or do those total thirty thousand?
They would be additional, the ones in the administration budget would total roughly fifteen thousand.
And the other three, would I assume, would be approximately the same?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I might ask you one more time. Three at Town Hall, one at the Manor, one at Parks and Rec, and one in Public Works?
Correct.
So would we be reducing, so are we taking these three out here? No.
No.
If the idea is to have interns from the local high schools, which I believe that's what was proposed.
Great idea.
It's not, no, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree. My question is, if we are setting up an internship program, like you said, Mr. Sines, the easy part is to simply write a check, that's extremely easy. Do, is there enough time to even get this program going before the next fiscal year starts? And if there isn't, it would seem to make sense to direct staff to start preparing an internship program for fiscal year 2026. That might make more sense from a logistics standpoint. That way, we don't have this thirty thousand dollar bucket, as Council McKendrick likes to call it, and it's not wrong, just floating out there.
Right.
What are your thoughts on that?
Typically, the program would be established before the funding. I mean, in, in, in a general planning sense, so. And, and as far as implementing any, and it's particularly administration, I'm not sure that's achievable before June 30th. I'm not going to say it's not.
It's not, it's not the highest priority, though.
Correct. You know, now, if there's some high school kids who want to come next week and apply and be an intern, we'd certainly, you know, try to work it out. But you gotta have a place to put them, they need a workstation, there needs to be a set of duties that they're going to do. There's just more to it than just come on over and, and hang out, kind of thing.
So.
Candidly speaking.
Mayor Prokem, I would recommend that we're halfway through the budget year. How far through the budget year are we? Forty-two percent. I mean, next month.
Be fifty.
So I would recommend that, because Fred's talking to people and other people may, Public Works maybe, I would recommend leaving fifteen in the budget, and I would recommend increasing the two forty-two to two fifty-seven four seventy-eight. That in essence would allow people to hire interns if, if they've already moved forward with their area.
So your recommendation would be to leave three of the interns?
Nope, all six.
Leave, oh, leave all six?
And you have half the year's budget, which is fifteen, if somebody, if all six show up tomorrow.
Yeah, but the fifteen doesn't cover all.
Was the internship, was the internship program positioned to be a full fiscal year position? I wouldn't think, I would think it would be more seasonal than anything.
Yeah, I think it was set up for some week, didn't we say eight weeks or something at a certain fee? Right. And I really feel like it was more toward like the out-of-school season.
Summertime.
Right.
That, that's what gives me pause to cut the budget in half, Council McKendrick. I, I'm kind of of the opinion, you either leave it as is or you, or you take it down.
I'm fine leaving it.
Yeah. Because if we, if you get a program going and then kids are out of school into May, they can start in June, and then you can roll them over through July and August, and, and we can, we could either roll those funds over or include it in the new budget and whatever. Again, if we budget for something and it doesn't get spent, and it's not like it goes away, we just save those funds. So, so if, if, does anyone object to just, to leaving that as is? All right?
No, no objection.
All right, so I, again, I, I ask on, on Paragraph 1, we're ignoring two and three because they, they roll into one. Does anybody have any objections to the positions listed here? If I don't hear any, and we don't have any additions, we'll just, we'll move on to number four. All right, I don't hear any objections, so let's move to number four, Mr. Sines, legal and professional.
Okay, item number four is budget line item 10 dash forty-one fifty-two eighty. It's legal and professional. This is ordinance codification. Our request is to increase two thousand, amending the budget line item to five thousand to fund possible additional code codifications in MUNICODE. The funds would come from ten ninety-two hundred nine nine one contingency. The current funding is a hundred and fifteen percent exhausted. And from what I'm gathering is code codifications seem to be very sporadic. They, and they also seem to be carrying over fiscal years. And what I'm saying is, I'm getting updates from MUNICODE for code codifications that were from last year, and I think it's a timing thing for MUNICODE. I will also say that there's been a few things we're not happy with, with MUNICODE, so we will actually be moving to ENCODE when we come to our new zoning LDO, once that is adopted. That's neither here for now, but right now, I feel like we need a few more dollars just in case we have some more codifications come in before the fiscal year ends.
Floor's open, members of council, any discussion on this?
And, and we're current, we're currently at a hundred and fifteen percent of budget just because of.
We've had several codifications coming in. We, we budgeted, you know, a certain amount we thought we might do, but we have actually experienced in codifications from the prior fiscal year that hadn't gotten completed yet. So we're having, we're having to kind of pay ca, carryover, if you will.
This is one of those instances where it looks like we budgeted three thousand, we're currently sitting around thirty-five hundred, and we've got to move, we've got to move the bar a little higher.
Right, right.
This is what typically we see with budget amendments. All right. Don't think we're going to have any objections here, so Mr. Sines will move to number five, additional legal and professional.
All right, the next line item is ten dash forty-one fifty dash four forty, legal and professional IT support. The request, a, a one-time increase of nineteen thousand two hundred, amending the budget line item to eighty-nine two hundred for FY twenty-five only. The FY twenty-six budget will reflect a reduction to forty-five thousand. Funds would come from ten ninety-two nine nine one contingency. Town staff negotiated out of the current VC3 IT support contract. This contract wasn't hot over new every five years, costing the town an average of forty-five hundred dollars a month. We've negotiated with Asset Technology Support for the same services and expanded services for thirty-two hundred dollars a month with an annual contract. The cost inflation is a result of new equipment and workstations for staff. The current workstations were leased from VC3, are very outdated, and they will be taking those with them. The town will also be switching the way it stores its data, having its own server at Town Hall, and then will be on a backup server or a remote server supported by the new Asset Technology Group. So, which will actually better secure our data. So just a little backstory on this, VC3 is who does all the IT management, our virtual office assistant, our emails, our computer workstations, and so on. When I got to reviewing, one, we started having a lot of issues with just things not working the way they should. And then we had a lot of issues with the responses to the help desk tickets and so on. And then I started looking at the costs, so then we looked at other companies. IT functions is one that doesn't require bidding per ordinance, so we landed with Asset Technology. And at the end, we'll reduce down to the thirty-two hundred a month after next year. So again, this is a one-time increase, and I'll take any questions.
Mr. Mayor Prokem, if I may, Council McKendrick, the new equipment, new computers, were they purchased in conjunction with Asset Technology?
Right, we had sixteen thousand allocated to new equipment with VC3, and then we had the line item, monthly fee services with VC3 in a separate account. So between the two, we, we had those funds, but then the exceeding amount really comes from the server and then also more workstations that needed to be replacing because VC3 owned more than what we thought, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Sines, with these additional workstations, will we actually own the equipment or is it continued?
We will actually own this equipment, and then it will be on a monitor system. And so they will continue the updates and do everything for us. And then they will also put us on a renewal plan and let us know when we need equipment before it gets so outdated that it's problematic.
Server as well?
Server as well.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, moving forward, we will own all our own equipment?
Right.
Okay. Council, the floor is open for a discussion on Paragraph 5. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Seems pretty straightforward. Good enough, thank you, Mr. Sines. Number six, parks and rec.
Line item forty-five ten three fifty-one, Parks and Recreation Repair and Project of Park. Request to increase two thousand, amend the budget to line item to twenty-five thousand. Funds would come from contingency. The increase is to help maintain repairs and necessary projects through June 2025. Just looking at the budget, we're sixty-five percent exhausted. And it just seems that repairs in the park just kind of seem to be continuing to be an ongoing thing. So really, it's just to just secure the budget to June 30th. It's a line item that we very well may be okay in, but it's just a safer than sorry with the opportunity we have, given where we're at in the percentage of the budget right now. I'll take any questions.
Members of council, the floor is open for Paragraph 6, Parks and Rec Repair. Any questions, comments? Any objections?
No. So just an, an additional two thousand dollars you feel is going to care, okay? Yeah, no objection.
Just additional maintenance and repairs?
Right.
Yeah, no objection.
All right. Moving on, Paragraph 7, another Parks and Rec. Mr. Sines?
Yes, Account forty-five ten four four three, Irrigation, Parks and Recreation Irrigation. Request is to increase to five thousand, amend in the budget line item to fifteen thousand. Funds would come from nine two hundred nine one, nine nine one contingency. The park irrigation system is now about twelve years old. Many of the pipes, valves, and everything within is fairly brittle and failing. We've had a lot of repairs this, this year. The funds are ninety-seven percent exhausted. Coming through the winter months and just any remaining repairs, we just feel like that we're probably going to need a little extra money. Essentially, we've been replacing a lot of the infrastructure as it relates to the irrigation. That would be mainly in controls and valves and the response from our irrigation. Uh, and the response from our irrigation contractor is where the, um, brittle and, uh, old age comments are coming from. So, that was his assessment. So just extra money to carry us through.
So, what would it cost to, um, to update the irrigation? So like, is this five thousand dollars going to patch it? Or is it, you know, would we be looking to update it?
We, yeah, we're not, we haven't been replacing any, um, what I guess we would call lateral lines, like, uh, main lines or anything of that nature. It's mainly the, the, the valves and the junctions at the different areas of the park, and, um, the controls are what seem to be the most failed points. Um, as far as a full replacement goes, the new soccer field will get irrigation, uh, updates as a part of that project. And then if you recall, we did put in the CIP for the amphitheater to get its own irrigation. Uh, the north, or the upper section of, uh, the, uh, park, Town Hall and across, is already newer irrigation. So, I'm not sure it warrants, um, a full replacement of every area. Um, and the irrigation contractor feels like he's getting to all of the root issues that we've been dealing with. So, hopefully, this is not an ongoing, um, repair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frup. Anybody have any additional questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll move to paragraph eight, manor operations, Mr. Steins?
Yes, manor operations, uh, seventy-one thirty-one eighty. This is related to salaries. Um, actually, number eight and number nine are also, this is a tie together as well, but I broke them apart to hopefully make better clarity of it. The request is to transfer ten thousand to ten seventy-one twenty-one eighty, manor administration salaries, amending the seventy-one thirty-one eighty line to forty-two thousand four hundred dollars. Manor part-time equivalent staff are paid from the manor operations account. Walt Davis and Kim Caxer were promoted to full-time in fall of twenty-twenty-four, which is paid from seventy-one twenty-one eighty, manor administration. This change allows Walt and Kim to work without hourly restrictions. The extra twenty hours per week between the two reduces the need for additional part-time staff, and provides a more stable workforce. This transfer will need to be increased by fif, uh, a supplemental increase of fifteen thousand, which is referenced in number nine, the seventy-one twenty-one eighty manor administration salaries. And that is a request to amend, uh, for an increase of fifteen thousand, making that budget line a total of one fifty-five zero seven seven. And this would come from ninety-two hundred nine nine one, the contingency funds. And that is an increase to supplement the ten thousand transfer.
So you're looking for twenty-five thousand dollars between those two line items?
Yes.
Correct.
And one's for part-time and one's for full-time?
Uh, no, the ten thousand would be transferred out of the part-time budget, which is manor operations, and that's where Kim and Walt were originally paid from.
Part-time.
And that, which is part-time.
Okay.
But that's just a transfer.
That's just a transfer, so that's.
So you're really looking for fifteen new?
I'm looking for fifteen thousand new dollars to be added to administration in the manor operations to help supplement that ten thousand transfer that would allow Walt and Kim to be paid from administration.
So you're taking ten out of part-time and putting twenty-five into full-time? Ten plus, the transfer plus an additional fifteen?
Correct.
Okay.
Fifteen from contingency, ten from the part-time.
Okay.
For a total of twenty-five.
Okay. I'm going to ask Councilman Kendrick this, because he was on council at, at, when this happened. Councilman Kendrick, do you remember when the manor was incorporated into the overall budget? It used to be a stand, kind of a standalone, uh...
Yeah, two years ago.
Item, or, or...
Entity.
Budget, entity, that's, yeah, that's a better word.
Enterprise.
Yep.
Two years ago, two budgets ago.
Mr. Steins, we're, I, I under, I understand the need for this. We've got to be able to see how the manor's doing as a standalone entity moving forward.
Right.
I disagreed at the time when the manor was incorporated into the budget, because, and I understand from an ease, ease of accounting standpoint, we were just moving money back and forth, back and forth, and you didn't have to do that. But it hid the successes or failures within the general budget, because it just covered it up. I don't mind, I personally don't mind it being incorporated in the overall budget, but we still have to, we need a subset, so that we can see if the manor's overperforming, because that's very possible, or underperforming, or it's right, meeting expectations.
Right.
So, I, I mean, I, I don't know if any, maybe, maybe you or Ms. Julie, because I don't, I, and any other members of council can explain this to me. I don't know if this is a good thing or a not-so-good thing. So I, and that's why I, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to stop, we're not going to stop the train because of this. But if we're increasing salaries, is this, is this ultimately netting, putting us in a better position? Or, or is it not? I, I don't know, because I can't, I don't know how well the, the manor's performing.
The justification behind, I guess, to answer, answer your questions one at a time. Um, I, I have notes, and I heard, I heard the requests at the last budget, uh, workshops to better define and separate the manor out. So we are going to be doing that this coming budget preparation season. Um, I know it's kind of bolded in a couple places, but I also know we need to kind of just really break it apart. So I'll work with Julie, and we will do that, uh, to, to make sure that it's, uh, presented that way. The other part is, is that we will have Fred at the January's council meeting bringing a mid-year report to tell council where we're at performance-wise, and we'll have those numbers together. Um, so that part will be, and then the justification for this is, is we have a decent bucket of money for part-time staff. Um, and the idea is that if we have two really high-quality performing individuals in the administration full-time, then we can reduce the demand or need for part-time. So, while we have the transfer now, and it may be in the budget of FY twenty-six, that we may be able to adjust that part-time budget a little bit more after we have a little bit better gauge at the hundred percent mark, or at least the seventy-five percent mark. Um, the reason I'm saying is, I was just reluctant to pull too much more from that manor operation or that part-time, not knowing the future, because I can say, not without any specific dollar increases, the manor is becoming, uh, busier, uh, in terms of bookings and those things. Uh, but that is a justification of having to rely less on part-time staff, thus reducing that bucket. But then we may have a slight increase here.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Julie, where is, I could probably find this, you can find it quicker, ten dash seventy-one twenty dash one eighty, right now?
Where are you looking at? Oh, was, what's the number?
Yeah. Of, of what, as well, because I don't have the total budget?
The salaries are seventy-one six one one fifty-three, and we budgeted one thirty oh seventy-seven.
Just a little over fifty percent of the way through it.
Fifty-five point zero five.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns about eight and nine? And ten and eleven are retirement and insurance that are also role, are results of eight and nine? So there's really no need to discuss those?
Correct.
The, uh, the only question I would have, and you could put it on nine, ten, and eleven, but when we, two months ago, when we announced that we were moving to part-time manor staff to full-time, um, my, my specific question was, is this going to have a budget impact? Is this going to cost us in the budget? And the answer at that time was no. But it actually is going to cost us, because we're, while we're reducing part-time by ten, we're increasing the other line items by thirty-five thousand dollars-ish, right?
Yes.
So, i- it's not a trade-off to hire two part-time people as full-time and, and call it a budget wash, because we're going to use fewer part-time hours. So there, there are, um, obviously.
No, it costs more money.
Benefits retirement, and now we're asking for more money to be allocated to that. So, I, I just think, again, we're beating a dead horse, but you said you're splitting it out, I think that's fantastic. I, I'm always in favor of putting money where you spend it. Even if it's going to drive you to a budget overage, you got to show it where you spend it. When you start this shell game of, we'll put it over here because we haven't spent any money out of there, your, your line items are never going to be right. Um, so, yeah, that, I, that's my only comment.
We'll look forward to Fred's mid-year review.
Yeah, and Fred and I are going to continue to work on, um, his budget and see where we really need to be, because both he and I are really kind of getting a full gauge. He just started, you know, um, three or four months ago, so we're, um, we'll be analyzing this a little bit closer and see where else we might save money.
And he was, the two of you worked to the fifteen number?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, moving on, paragraph twelve, debt services payments, Mr. Steins?
This one should be pretty easy. This is a, um, ten ninety-one hundred seven fifty line, debt service payment, Blackwood Facilities Corporation. That's the request to transfer one million five hundred eighty-five thousand two hundred fourteen dollars from thirty dash nine one one zero five eight three, which is capital outlay improvements. That would amend that budget line to one million six hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars. Um, the amended budget line for thirty dash nine one one five eight three CIP will be two million seven hundred seventeen thousand zero seven, seventy-six dollars. Um, the town's financial firm has essentially said that we need to demonstrate the Blackwood Facilities Corporation loan payment from, um, from our debt services line and not our CIP. So it's really just a auditing formality.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to assume that there's no objections from members of council on this one, and move to the final. Lucky thirteen, uh, general fund contingency, Mr. Steins. What has these actions done to the contingency bucket?
You, actually, the reverse of what you'd normally be at, I guess. Um, so the revised contingency, which is ten ninety-two hundred nine nine one, general fund, this account has an unallocated fund balance, uh, and a total of three hundred seven thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars will be added to contingency as a result of general fund amendments. A total of sixty-two thousand three hundred eleven dollars will be deducted from the contingency as a result of the general fund amendments. And the revised FY twenty-five contingency fund is five hundred and twenty thousand and fifty-five dollars.
So it's going up approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Pretty much.
Not bad. Do any members of council have any questions regarding this particular line item?
None, other than the fact that, as we've stated already, if we're increasing the contingency fund balance, the only way to get to that balance is for a collective movement by this council.
That would be my understanding. If funds are not allocated for a specific task, an individual cannot go in there and take those unappropriated funds and allocate them as they see fit.
I would, I would agree with that, that would be my advice. There's got to be some appropriation made for that.
Okay.
And then Mr. Mayor Prokem, Councilman Kendrick. Based on information received during this meeting, I would make a motion that we move into executive dis, executive session to discuss an email. I most certainly can do that, sir.
I'm sorry, to discuss what?
Um, a personnel matter.
Related to the agenda item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it is proper to move into executive session for one of the reasons listed in the Freedom of Information Act if the executive session, um, is also relating to an item that's already on the, on the agenda. So to the extent that the request is to have an executive session to discuss personnel matters related to the...
I can tell you it's related.
To the budget, to the, to the position, to the positions discussed within here, yes, that would be proper.
So that's, that's a motion?
Yes, it is.
All right, I'll be looking for a second and move to executive session. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Councilman Kendrick made the motion, Councilwoman Frup made the second. All those in favor, we'll just do a standard I vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the ayes have it. Six fifty-seven. I'll be looking for a motion to come into open session. Shall move? Looking for a second. It's been properly motioned and seconded to come into public session. All those in favor, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? We are now in public session at 6:57 PM. Since we went into executive session, we'll slightly amend the agenda to add, we can fix this for later, Ms. Durs, but I'm going to add a item to ask if there are any motions that council would like to propose resulting from the discussions in executive session. Are there any motions from executive session? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve ordinance 2024.009. Is there a motion to approve, first reading of ordinance 2024.009?
As stated.
And I'll second that motion. Okay, there's been a motion to approve ordinance 2024.009. I'll read it in its entirety. It's the first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance 2024.004 so as to provide for amendments to the revenue and expenditure appropriations to the general fund. to the revenue and expenditure appropriations to the general fund, state accommodations tax fund, local accommodations tax fund, and hospitality tax fund in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. It's been properly motioned, seconded, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Councilman McKendrick.
Our Mayor Protim, sorry. In that ordinance, can we also attach the town administrators justification one through thirteen, which we went over prior to going into executive session? Which explains each?
It's the justification for the motion and the amendment.
Does anybody object to that?
No, Texas.
So that would be a friendly amendment, you accept a friendly amendment, Councilwoman Fritt?
Yes.
To reference the Town of Blythewood Town Council memo from staff dated twelve five twenty twenty-four, paragraphs one through thirteen.
And then in, in?
Yeah, if I could just real quick, and I think that would be wise to reference that since the ordinance that is being considered itself in the last paragraph, the be it ordained paragraph of the ordinance itself references an attached document. So, I mean, I think, I think the budget amendment memo that was sent from town staff should be, should be part of, part of that.
And then in that clarification, excuse me, and justification as part of the ordinance where it says whereas the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget was adopted with the passage of ordinance twenty twenty-four dot zero zero four. I wanna further clarify what our actions are doing tonight and certainly our intent of these actions. The result here and the main impact on the budget in the one eighty categories is a reduction of staff by position, which will leave the forty-one twenty dash one eighty funded full-time positions for the Town of Blythewood at second reading as the town administrator, full-time, a marketing special projects manager, full-time, the municipal clerk, full-time, and the finance director slash H. R. Director, full-time. That is the only positions left at second reading in forty-one twenty dash one eighty.
Councilman McKendrick, for clarification, that would also include the three interns as well, because I believe that is on that line item as well.
But they are part-time, yes, sir.
Yeah, so those three, those three positions as well. Pete, would that require any sort of friendly amendment, or is that just an explanation to the intent, the intent of the memo?
Yeah, I mean, I think that was part of the discussion, but, I mean, I think that would be wise to incorporate that, that discussion and explanation into, into the motion if somebody wants to do that.
Do you object to that friendly amendment?
No, I don't.
All right, so it's been properly moved and seconded to a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dot zero zero nine and ordinance to amend ordinance twenty twenty-four dot zero zero four as to provide for amendments to the revenue and expenditure appropriations of the general fund, state accommodations tax fund, local accommodations tax fund, and hospitality tax fund in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. It's further moved that the following positions are the only positions that are funded in, under administration, line ten forty-one twenty dash one eighty, and those positions are town administrator, what were the other ones?
Marketing special projects manager.
Okay.
Municipal clerk.
Yep.
Finance director and H. R. Director.
All right, and the three interns. Does that cover all our bases?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
I think it's finance slash H. R. Director.
Finance slash H. R.
Julius.
So it's four, four full-time, three, three potential part-time.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Durs, would you mind doing one roll call vote, please?
Councilwoman Page?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fritt?
Yes.
Councilman McKendrick?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Brock?
Yes.
Thank you.
The affirmative has it, the motion carries. All right, next to last item on the agenda, open citizen's comment, we have one citizen who has patiently waited. The Mayor Protim recognizes Keith Bailey.
Is it on?
There you go.
Okay. Well, you know, I served on councilman mayor for over eight years. Never had a special call meeting. Just wanted to know why there's an emergency budget at this juncture? Is it because we're overspent? The town's overspent? Does anybody have an answer to that? Oh, okay, I guess not. Well, let me just give you some background in terms of the history. I've been attending, attending these meetings, like I said, twenty-five, over twenty-five years. It's the first time I ever seen that the council tried to drill down by positions. Just give you a vignette, I served on council. I was up at, I was up at the, at Hoffman House, and I was reading the ordinances. So the mayor comes and he sees me, he says, hey, look, this is our two new employees. I said, okay. Cause my, you know, my thought process is if you expect me to cook the meal, you need to at least let me shop the groceries. And so in essence, I wanted him to be successful. If he felt that that person needed to be there, or that position needs to be there, I wasn't gonna contend that, you know? But for some reason, it appears, and what you do is you handcuff the mayor to, to be able to do his job or her job. Because at that point, what occurs is that, oh, we gotta go back through this again, go back to them about a position like, something may, opportunity, like you said one time, let's take, let's take advantage of an opportunity. Opportunity may occur, it's not in the budget for a position, then we have to go through this nut roll again. I think what you done is you, you try to usurp the mayor's authority and power. And like I said, I sat on both sides of that table, and I know it looks easy, especially if the mayor's not doing anything, but there's always seems to be some contention. You know, the town has, has really been on interrupt for the last ten years. Nothing of significance happened, except for that scout, and we know that doesn't add value to Blythewood whatsoever. But addition to that, when the mayor says, okay, guys, we can, you know, we can do this, and we can do that, then also it's kind of fine that the mayor, the staff works for the mayor directly. So, you know, he ought to be able to pick what he, what he thinks are the best people. I just think that you guys are, what you're doing is you, you're taking an opportunity, well, he's not even here, you're taking an opportunity to bring, bring up a problem or issue that ain't one. This is like, what, a, a problem looking for an answer? No, this is a solution. The solution is, is to allow the mayor to do, in this particular case, Mayor Griffin, to be able to shape his staff in the best effective manner. If you guys are concerned about budgets, that's one thing. But usually, you know, if you're concerned about a budget, it's usually, it usually leads to overspending, or potentially overspending. But now you're trying to shape the staff, and I don't understand that. I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable if I was the mayor. In fact, I told, I, I discussed with Mayor Griffin, I said, what is this committee you got looking for people to fill positions? I said, no, 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 you're the C. E. O. of the, of the town, you make that call. You select the best people. That's why when Pete Amis told me as a council member, these two employees, I said, they're gonna help you? Yeah. I'm like, no, no, we don't budget for that, this, no, no, we did none of that. So it appears, just from me looking, there's a, there is a wedge between the council and the mayor. And therefore, the community is not benefiting from that. What I'd urge you to do is to perhaps understand your position. I understood my position in both cases, and I know, I knew immediately that we weren't doing anything. And so I said, look, we got a blank canvas here, we can do a lot. There's a lot of things, we can build a park, we can do all sorts of things. In fact, that's one of the things I told folks when I was campaigning, we will build this park out here. Now, right here, just to give you a little bit of history, right there in that pond, used to be a stone mill. Stone mill, grinds, I guess he used to grind stone or something like, make cement, cement, and it was just a dilapidated area right there. So, I said, look here, we can, we can reshape that so it's more friendly environment, environmental friendly, and we'll be able to, and we'll be able to have somewhere as a centerpiece that folks who come and have, and fellowship with their fellow neighbors. So I'm just saying, you know, I understand there's a lot of things that, that the council has to consider, but I think you, you, what you, what you're doing is that you all are spending a lot of time providing, I don't know, things that chap your hips, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce or some other issue. But I think, you know, you spend better, your time would be better spent, you'd be better served if you tried to help the individual that the community voted on as the mayor, as opposed to opposing everything. This backdoor kind of stuff that you're doing, trying to defund and reposition by name, everybody in there that's, that's, that works for the town is a state employee. It's on the website, anybody above fifty thousand dollars, their name is listed, what they do, their position, and responsibility. It's up on the website. So, I heard you ask, well, can we get the exact salaries? There's a range on it for each one of those line positions. It's not exact salaries, then come down like, you know, zero two, point zero two cents. What I really want you all to do is just take a minute, take a breath, and say, look, we want this guy to be successful, because when he's successful, the community's successful. Just have some buy-in, that's all, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor Bailey. Before I call for an adjournment, one last question. State statute, I believe, requires seven days between readings, is that correct? Mr. Malteza?
I think so, I'm not sure of the exact time limit, I know there is.
While you're looking that up, what is council's appetite for an additional special call meeting before the regularly scheduled December meeting? Not everybody at once.
Okay, so we circled back, meet again for the second reading, and then
I don't know, I'm looking it up, I just don't know.
With the December regular council meeting, this will already be?
Would be put to bed.
And our regularly stated meeting is the twenty-third? Sixteenth, because of Christmas.
Well, that's only, if the earliest we could have is the twelfth.
Yeah.
I, yeah, if, if our meeting is the sixteenth, I don't see a reason to. Yeah. I didn't, I didn't realize that our meeting was the sixteenth.
Mayor Protim Brock?
Yes.
The state statute provides that there must be at least six days between each reading. So I would say tomorrow would be day one. And then I would count six days from there, and then I guess that, so the earliest special call meeting from there could be seven, seven days, so seven days from today.
Twelve.
Yeah.
I, I'm comfortable on the sixteenth if everybody else is.
Yeah.
Any objections to just leaving this on as an item that'll be on the agenda on the sixteenth?
No, no objection, sir.
You good with that, Daniel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, last item on the agenda.
I think there should be a, I think there should just be a vote for that, because I think the, I think in our ordinances, if there's going to be another special meeting, it has to be called by a majority of council or the, or the mayor.
But we're not calling another one.
We're gonna do it on the regular schedule.
That's a regular schedule.
But here's the question, here's the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Council doesn't set the agenda. What if he chooses to leave this off? Well, would it be appropriate to make a motion to require this, can you do that? I, I'm asking a question, Keith, be quiet, I appreciate you being here.
What are you talking to?
I'm talking to you, man, you don't have to laugh every time, we're looking for information. Okay, I'm, I'm looking for information. Okay. I'm not asking you to leave, sir. What would ensure that we can get this on the agenda?
Having a special call meeting. It's the games, it's the game, I mean, it's all moves and counter moves. It's ridiculous that you even have to ask that question.
No.
I mean, I can, I can tell you, I mean, I think we all are well aware of what the ordinances and statutes say about getting items on an agenda. I, I don't, I don't know more than that, all, all I can do is recite to you what, what they say.
No, I understand that, but I can tell you that there are members on this council that have asked for weeks in advance to have items placed on the agenda, only to have their request ignored or flatly denied, and then the council has to move to amend the agenda at the beginning of the, of the meeting, and that's just a bad look.
I would say.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, like I say, I can just, I can just tell you what the,
Yeah.
what the ordinances allow.
Mayor Protim and
Yes, ma'am.
Council, I said, in, in light of that, I think that we come back together. And we, so I'm in agreement that we have another special call meeting. I just don't wanna take the chance or go through the back and forth. So I say we have, I, I mean, I know it's tough and it's the holiday season, but if we can do it, I say, let's do it.
And I don't wanna, because I don't, I simply don't know, do, do we know when the town's Christmas party is?
Sure.
December twenty-first.
December twenty-first? That is what?
That's a Saturday.
Pete, do you count weekends on your?
Yes.
So weekends, days do count?
Yes, like I say, I think the earliest that, that a meeting can be held to give second reading to this ordinance would be December twelfth.
I would make the motion that we have a special call meeting on December twelfth for the purpose of second reading.
I second.
What time? It's properly motioned and seconded. The what?
Time.
Okay, it's been properly motioned and seconded to have a special call meeting on December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at five thirty at the manor, for the purpose of second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dot zero zero nine. There'll also be a public hearing. It's been properly motioned, seconded, Ms. Durs, we do roll call, please, real quick, thank you.
Councilwoman Page?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I mean, I guess, you bring up a good point. As far as budgeting, budgeting may need a, a public hearing, we'll have to look into that. And whether the proper notice can be provided for a public hearing for the budget in time for a second reading on, on December twelfth.
Can we not do the public hearing on the twelfth?
You can, but there may be some additional requirements about how, how far in advance the public, the notice needs to be given for a public hearing. I'll have to get with Daniel on that and figure that out, but, so, so, so it interrupts, I mean, I think the motion can still be, be, be voted on, but we'll have to, we'll have to figure out whether that is, that is maybe too quick to get all the public notices out for a public hearing on, on a budget amendment.
All right, well, it's
Sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Durs, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Page?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fritt?
Yes.
Councilman McKendrick?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Brock?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have it. All right, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Shall move?
Looking for a second? Any discussion? It's been properly motioned, seconded to adjourn this meeting at seven